Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 23 Board of Education meeting. Mr. Colivano.
Roll call. Mr. Charles.
Present.
Mrs. Lamb.
Present.
Mrs. Mordecai.
Present.
Mr. Robertson.
Present.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of meeting. Please take notice, I had a quick notice that this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 5, 2016. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and a Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Colivano. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of May 9, 2016?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Mr. Rutzke, Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. We're going to start with our Hazel Elementary School and our enrichment program. We will then be following up with our social studies presentation, our K-12. So, Ms. Halen, if I can have you, where's Ms. Halen? If I can have you, come on up. We'll give Ms. Halen a microphone and she can introduce what we're going to see tonight from our students at Hazel.
Do you want us to go the other way?
Yeah, sure. We'll go on the other side since we're going to do it for the social studies presentation.
Okay, so you have to take your booklet.
Yes, Mr. Charles.
Good evening. We are Hazel School and we are going to be talking about our enrichment program that we had this year. We have Rajvi, Priyanka, Nick, Sierra, Alejandra, and Annika, and they are going to discuss ancient Egypt. And you will hear and see some of their projects that they've created over the course of the semester.
We learned about hieroglyphics. Each letter represents a symbol. Ancient Egyptians used hieroglyphics as their way of communicating with each other. We created a cartouche which is ablong in shape and represents the name and title of a monarch. We designed them with our names in hieroglyphics.
We learned about papyrus and how Egyptians created paper from the plant. It was used for making rope, sandals, boats, and writing or painting. It took us two days to make our papyrus, then we wrote a message in hieroglyphics on it.
The gods and kings which were known as the pharaohs wore high dresses. They also took these with them in afterlife. We created them and wore them to represent pharaohs. King Tut was a pharaoh and began his reign when he was nine years old. He died when he was eighteen. This is how ancient Egyptians preserved their dead. His golden coffin was buried in a tomb surrounded by 5,000 priceless treasures.
Cleopatra was the queen of Egypt. She was very beautiful and was twelve-year-old when she came into power. She was married twice and had three children. She wanted to keep her power so she didn't let anyone stand in her way. Her love of her life committed suicide, and sadly she did the same. There are two theories of how she committed suicide. One that she let a poisonous snake bite her and the other was she swallowed lots of poison. She was the last pharaoh of Egypt.
In third grade, we learned about mummification and how pharaohs got mummified. The body was first cleaned by water from the Nile River. The organs were removed. They believed the brain did not give you knowledge, so it was thrown away. Ancient Egyptians placed the liver, lungs, and intestines in canopic jars. These jars represented the gods that would guard them. Natron was used to dry the body. The body was dry and lins. It was placed inside a zacarpagus and then inside a tome.
Jewelry was a very important part of ancient Egyptian culture. Egyptians loved all kinds of jewelry. It was believed that it would help them in the afterlife if jewelry was in their tombs. Also jewelry was used as lucky charms and supposedly helped one get closer to the gods and goddesses. Egyptians made many amazing pieces of jewelry. Only the rich and royals wore gold. Here are some of the artifacts that we created in our enrichment class. We had so much fun learning about ancient Egypt.
Let's give our third graders a round of applause. They worked really hard on all these projects. We learned a lot about ancient Egypt, and I'm very proud of all of them. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Halen, before we go, can you just talk a little bit about what your role and Rebecca's role has been in the elementary schools and the enrichment, please?
Sure. So, this semester, we decided to start a new program for enrichment for second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. We go into the classrooms for about eight weeks and we work with the students. In fifth grade, we do a bridge-building project. In fourth grade, we learn about natural disasters. And third grade is ancient Egypt. And in second grade, we're doing the solar system and a lot of logical problems and thinking. So, so far, it's been a really big hit. The kids really enjoy it. They like when we come in. We've learned a lot. They're sad to see us go at the end of the program. And Rebecca and I have worked really hard in creating the program.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you go into each section of the...
We provide.
Explain that to the...
We provide enrichment to all the schools, to all the grade levels. So, we go in for 45 minutes and we teach all the children. So, everybody is being provided enrichment this year.
Yeah, we changed it a little bit from last year to this year, so all the students have the opportunity to have both teachers come into their class and do enrichment activities with them. And again, just like everything else, we'll be looking at this year and making changes and tweaks to it based on both teachers' feedback and the principal's feedback. So, I also want to recognize Ms. Carr. Those that don't know, she is the interim principal. Ms. Carr, could you just stand up for one minute so you can be recognized? Ms. Carr has made a seamless transition and obviously big shoes with Dr. Oscevedo, so your presence being there is very much appreciated. It's very nice to have you as well, Ms. Carr. Boys and girls, thank you very much. You did an amazing job presenting. Ms. Halen, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Oshowski, would you mind getting set up for the PowerPoint? Ms. Halen, before you go, can we just see if there's any questions from the public based on what you're doing as Mr. Oshowski is getting set up? If you can just come back up front. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to ask a question to Ms. Halen about the enrichment program? Anything in particular? If you need an answer? No? Okay. Son, thank you very much. Feel better. Have a good night. Mr. Oshowski, ready to go?
Ready to go.
Go ahead, please take it over.
I guess it's only fitting that I follow ancient Egypt, right? I'd like to welcome everybody.
Sorry, Mr. Oshowski, let me just... For all the parents who are here for the students now, you're welcome to stay. You certainly do not have to. I just wanted to give you an opportunity. If you want to get up and go, you can. Obviously, if you want to watch the presentation, whatever is best for you. We know the kids need to get home and get into bed for tomorrow, so it's completely up to you what you want to do. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here. Last January 2015, I became supervisor of social studies after a number of years in the district and really gave me an opportunity to learn as much as I can about our social studies programs. I was fortunate enough to teach in the middle school and the high school here in West Orange. And when I became supervisor, I was able to really lean on Ms. Rutzke, the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Rando, the building principals. And I was also lucky to have Mark Lawrence, Eric Price, who were two former supervisors that are now also administrators in the district. So, having them around and being able to ask questions and poke their brains has been very advantageous to me. So, as I go through this PowerPoint, what you'll see is it's kind of a culmination of what we looked at over the past year or so. Our current elementary program, we use My World Social Studies. It's a K-5 program. One of the great things about the program is it's a seven-year subscription. We're in year three of the subscription. We don't have to reorder textbooks every year. They send textbooks out right to the schools every year based on the numbers that we have. The kids are able to work with their workbooks, their interactive workbooks. They come with a number of different digital presentations, so the kids can interact with the smartboard. It's all built right into the program. One of the great strengths of the program is we have all the schools are utilizing the same materials every single day. Each program, each grade level, except for grade four, because it's a New Jersey program, comes with leveled readers, below-level, on-level, and above-level readers, so the kids get to utilize the reading skills within the social studies program, so we can balance out our literacy program here as well. Some of the things that we've been looking at over the past year and moving forward is how can we better integrate ELA into the social studies and be able to work together? I've been working with the LA Department at both the middle and elementary level in trying to align our scope, our sequence, our curriculum, so they can work hand-in-hand with each other. The other area that we're going to see moving forward is the infusion of technology. Although the kids have been using smartboards regularly, little by little, as we get to introduce the Chromebooks to them and Google Apps for Education, I think technology and social studies really go hand-in-hand in getting the kids to collaborate about the global world, collaborate about citizenship, civic engagement, and social studies content in general. The other thing that we are going to always look at is how can we obtain additional resources to complement our social studies program, especially as it comes to reading and writing and thinking. So, this year, some of the things that we've done is we began the process of looking at and acquiring leveled readers for the fourth grade. As I mentioned earlier, our program does not have leveled readers for fourth grade because it's a New Jersey program. So, we created book lists and we sent them out to the principals and we're hoping little by little to obtain more leveled readers for our fourth graders. We're reviewing the curriculum between grades five and grade six, so we can make sure that we have a seamless transition for those students as they leave the seven elementaries and move on to Edison. And then, obviously, we're going to be preparing for departmentalization. If we move, when we move to having the kids in social studies more often at a regular, in a regular schedule, they can investigate social studies at a deeper level. It'll develop their skills and, you know, really get the kids to engage in the content in a whole 'nother level. Next year, obviously, we're going to monitor our current programs. We're going to hopefully revise and really look at our curriculum, grades four, grade five, grade six, especially grade five and grade six. And then, we're going to constantly be looking at how can we integrate ELA. I know ELA is in the process of redoing their scope and sequence, and I've been working with Denise on that. Oh, I'm sorry. The other thing that we're going to be looking at too is because we'll be going into year four of our social studies program, we're hoping to bring Pearson back in, because now we're going to have some new technology that hopefully that's available to us and we'll be able to better utilize the program with the technology. So, we're hoping to bring Pearson back in and get them to give us some more help on how we can use the resources more effectively. Our current middle school program, grade six, grade seven, grade eight, United States history through industrialization. The grade six program picks up where the grade five curriculum leaves off. Grade seven is civics and economics, and grade eight is ancient world history. All three, you have online resources for the students, so not only do we have the textbooks available in class, but there's online components for the students to be able to access those materials at home. One of the things that we've seen this year in our middle school program is the infusion of technology. I do believe that the social studies teachers have been very strong and very willing to adapt to the new technology that's available to us, to integrate it effectively into our lessons. The kids are collaborating on Google Docs and Google Slides almost regularly, almost every day at the middle school level. The other thing that we've been doing is we've incorporated a greater number of document-based assessments, document-based questions, really trying to teach the kids historical thinking skills, how to read and write like a historian. And in doing that, that helps develop their analytical skills, which again helps with evidence-based writing, which is really what we want. The other thing that we've done this year is Liz Veneziano and myself, we're using the same writing rubric. So, now, when the kids are writing and they're utilizing evidence to construct an argument, they're not using one rubric in ELA and a different one in social studies. They're going to be using the same rubric. One of the things that we want to look at moving forward is for the past couple of years at Edison Middle School, we haven't had social studies every day, and that's presented some challenges for both the teachers and the students in developing a continuity in terms of both the content and the social studies skills. So, being able to get them to have social studies every day is something that we're all kind of looking forward to, so that we can constantly build upon the skills, we can take them deeper, we can take them to other levels. And again, social studies and writing and ELA goes hand-in-hand. To think like a historian, you have to be able to think, read, and write.
Can I jump in for a minute?
Sure. One of the things that goes along with the social studies every day is the science every day. And currently, right now, we have an A/B schedule for science and social studies, and that is not productive in a sixth-grade class. So, not only is the social studies going to go to an every-day, we're also looking at the science, and we're working on that right now. And that's going to be really bolster the program, where they get a solid foundation in sixth grade, every single day. And you've heard all of the writing that is happening under Mr. Oshowski's leadership here and working with the two language arts supervisors. So, by going to an every-day schedule, it's going to be much better as the kids move up to the grade levels.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rutzke. And then, the other thing that we're really looking at with regards to our middle school program is really developing the kids to think with inquiry-based type of questions, which again goes hand-in-hand with the reading, the writing, the analytical skills, but really going even a step further with our 21st century skills, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking. And that's where the technology again goes hand-in-hand with us. And then, also increasing the activities that we have that are aligned to our standards to have the kids have more real-world experiences. So, when they're learning content about ancient Egypt, how does that apply to today? What are the lessons that we can learn from then and connect it to today? That's especially critical in the civics classroom that we have in the seventh grade or in the United States history classes, when they're looking at the 19th century, industrialization, sectionalism, nationalism, so on and so forth. So, what we've done this year is we really spent a lot of time with Roosevelt and Liberty and aligning our pacing, trying to get them more together, more on the same pace. We've developed a lot of common assessments. I meet with the teachers regularly, both in professional learning communities on a weekly basis, and then through our department meetings. It's all about getting the teachers to collaborate, aligning our scope and sequence, and then making sure that we're using common assessments, we're assessing the kids fairly, rigorously, and hopefully developing the skills that we need to prepare them for the future. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the alignment with the standards-based rubric in ELA. Next year, we're going to continue looking at the curriculum. We've already begun kind of developing some of our plan for next year and really looking at some of the different lessons and activities and assessments that bring some of those skills that we want, the inquiry-based skills, the collaboration, the creativity, the real-world application, and then begin to put them into the curriculum. And then, really look at which ones we're doing well, which ones we need to develop a little further. We're going to spend a lot of time in our weekly meetings and our department meetings really trying to create real-world experiences for our students, and that's in all three middle schools. And then, the other thing where you probably hear the word "document-based question" all the time in social studies, DBQs, DBQs, is we're going to begin creating a DBQ framework, both myself and a group of teachers, so we can make sure that our skills from sixth grade, when we begin introducing DBQs, to seventh grade, as we begin to develop them a little further, and then hopefully by the time they leave eighth grade, they are prepared for high school, where they're going to be seeing them in a lot of their classes every day. We want to make sure that we have consistency. We want to make sure we have that articulation from grade six to grade seven to grade eight in terms of the expectations, the rigor, so on and so forth. And then, we're also going to be looking at to develop some further benchmark writing assessments, especially in grade seven, civics. We want to try to bring it together and see if we can find some real good assessments that we can use at periodic points, not just to assess their knowledge of civics, but also their writing ability. This is our current high school program. The state of New Jersey requires two years of United States history, one year of world history. So, our students take modern world history in ninth grade, a continuation of the eighth grade ancient world history. Then, they move on to US I and 10th grade, and then in 11th grade, US II, honors US II, or they have the option of advanced placement United States history. When we look at some of the strengths we have here at the high school, our AP offerings and our elective offerings at the high school are just tremendous. I am very proud to say I feel like we offer some of the best courses at the high school level. We have a number of students that are always interested in taking our courses, and you'll see when I get to that list shortly, that it offers a variety of different experiences for the students. We also have our small learning communities, the Institute of Humanities, which is a ninth, 10th grade-based program, which is ELA and social studies collaboration. And then, we also in 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade have what's called the Institute for Citizen Empowerment, which is really a citizenship-based, civics-based learning experience for the students. They follow the same curriculum, US I, US II, but they're in a small learning community where they look to take these experiences and they apply them to the real-world citizen engagement, so on and so forth. As a continuation of everything we do here, reading like a historian, reading, writing, thinking deeply. Here, you can see the four advanced placement courses that we have, AP US History, AP World History, AP Government and Politics, and AP Psychology. And then, the vast course offerings we have as far as our electives are concerned. This is one of the strengths of our program. Regardless of what a student is interested in when they reach 11th grade, 12th grade, they're going to be able to take a social studies elective and get a great learning experience from it. Some of the areas that we'd like to look to develop, one is placement in our AP classes and our honors classes. We want to make sure that we have a consistent criteria as far as what are the expectations. We want to try to find more common planning time. At the high school, we have a rotating drop. It does present some challenges of trying to get teachers who do not have some of the same common off periods together to plan together. And then, we also looked at, I was a LEP teacher, Limited English Proficient US II, and so when I came in, I had some experience. And one of the things that we're looking to develop is our sheltered English program. So, as part of our plan, one of the things we've done is we've, again, implemented the common rubric that we're using between ELA and social studies. We also developed a professional learning community for our LEP United States history teachers. They've attended workshops on sheltered English training. They have opportunities within the day to actually collaborate. They've developed common writing rubrics, common writing expectations aligned with the WITAS standards, which is for sheltered English instruction. And they've been able to actually have discussions of how they can better help this population of students we have. The other thing that we began this year in the process was rewriting the curriculum. The state of New Jersey put out a model curriculum. They've realigned the standards in 2014, which have a greater emphasis on 20th century history. And so, what we did is we went and looked and said, okay, we're going to have to reexamine our curriculum, and that's what we did. In rewriting the modern world history curriculum, we put a greater emphasis on more recent, post-1945 history, regional aspect, looking at the different regions and the impact of world history on those regions today. United States history, we actually are going to expand them. We're going to get them a little bit further to 1900. And then, the United States II teachers are going to pick up in 1900, and this will allow them to get even further into 20th century history. If you really look at 1970 to present, as far as the standards, huge emphasis on domestic policy, foreign policy at that time. And so, by adjusting the curriculum just slightly, it's going to give us further opportunities to delve deeper into that. This coming year, we're hoping to expand our professional learning communities at the high school. As I said, we had the LEP one, which has been very successful, I feel, and so we're going to look to expand that with the teachers, and that will also give them a greater sense of common planning time as well. We're going to continue monitoring our assessments. We're going to be looking at both formative and summative assessments, making sure all of our assessments are aligned, but also making sure that they're rigorous. The state of New Jersey has put out an assessment blueprint and has put out some model assessments in United States I, United States II, history as well as modern world. So, we want to really look at our assessments and try to make sure that they're aligned to the state model. And that is it. Thank you very much.
If I can just add one thing to Mr. Oshowski's presentation, is he's been working with the lower-grade level teachers in the transition to departmentalization and looking at the core content areas for fifth grade and fourth grade to make sure that we're bringing those on board and getting those aligned with the current curriculums. And then, there'll be a rewrite based on where the teachers believe things need to be changed and aligned to language arts, et cetera. So, a lot of really phenomenal work. Please give Mr. Oshowski a round of applause.[1581.86][1581.86](applause) Okay, what we're going to do is invite the board to come back up. Mr. Oshowski, if you can just switch gears, come over here. And the board will ask questions first, and then we'll open it up to the public to ask questions specific to the program, and then we can get you out of here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oshowski. That was a great presentation. I am so excited by the fact that science and social studies are going to be taught on a daily basis. It's, when we were in school, that's what happened, and I actually, social study was my absolute favorite subject, so I'm just really glad that the kids are going to be doing that. And the coordinated aspect with the ELA program is phenomenal, because sometimes there's such a disconnect between areas and it should be a cohesive thing. But I adore our social studies program at the high school. In fact, my son Jesse had Mr. Figurito.
Yes.
And he's now studying to be a high school social studies teacher at FDU because of Mr. Figurito. So, when kids get up to the high school, we have a phenomenal staff up there, not to mention the staff throughout. In fact, Ms. Mordecai and Mr. Schwartzbaum and I, along with Superintendent Rutzke, had attended Jay Wex's presentation a couple of weeks ago. I believe you were there.
Yes, I was there.
For Holocaust. And, you know, social studies, to me, is probably the most important subject, because it's about life. I mean, math is okay, you know, you have to know about algebra, suppose, I don't know, but social studies is how you become an adult, how you place the world around you. But again, I just wanted to thank you very much for the presentation. Do any of my colleagues have any brief remarks or questions to Mr. Oshowski? Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Can you give an example of a common rubric?
A common rubric? Okay, so, at the middle school level, it's standards-aligned. So, we looked at the Common Core. In the Common Core, there are ELA standards for history and social studies, for reading and writing and history and social studies. So, myself, it began with Liz Veneziano. We sat down together and we looked at this rubric of how we can have the same rubric. So, it basically grades the kids holistically on a 4-3-2-1 level, looking at thesis, constructing an argument, constructing a claim. It is all based on the Common Core rubric. It is a similar rubric that is used for PARK, when they grade the kids for the evidence-based writing. I believe there are eight different components. So, we're using the exact same one, but we also make sure that in the rubric, the standards are listed there. So, when the kids are provided the rubric, they can see exactly what standards apply to which criteria they're going to be graded on.
Ms. Mordecai?
Yes, I just have one thing. Thank you. That was a wonderful presentation. I just had, I guess, a comment. On the chart discussing the AP and honors programs that are offered, the AP World History isn't on the chart on page 14, but then it's listed on the other one.
Which... Oh, okay, because AP World History is offered to 12th graders.
Oh, okay.
Right. That's the requirements by the state. Right, that's the requirements by the state.
The 12th grade column is missing.
Right.
Okay, and I know you mentioned that you wanted to move in the direction of having the kids understand social studies in a real world setting. Have you thought to, I guess, reach out to the town? I know they have a town historian, Joe Fagan, who does really wonderful work, to see how the kids could somehow fit into the Historic Preservation Society of the Town.
Yeah, I think that's actually a wonderful idea. I actually just had the opportunity to look at some of his work. I really wasn't that familiar with it until recently. So I actually think that's a wonderful idea, and that is definitely something we'll try to bring them in. I think that would be a great idea.
Wonderful. Thank you for all your hard work.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Mr. Olschowski, that was impressive, your vision, your insights and the overall plan. You have a strong department. My son is actually in the IH program.
Great.
And Jared loves it. I mean, I've just been blown away by the teachers there. And they actually do an amazing job already of really integrating ELA and social studies. It's a brilliant program. You know, the IMS program and the sciences in general have done a great job of making the case for careers and supported with data. And I think there's an opportunity, this is more of a comment and followed by the question. I think there's an opportunity to make a stronger case for the humanities as to what their related careers on beyond obvious ones like psychology, whether it's from CIA and State Department to, you know, areas of sociology, diplomacy, international relations, et cetera, or even how it can be combined with STEM disciplines for things like experimental social psychology.
Right.
What are some of your, my first question is, what are some of your thoughts in that area? My second question is, are you looking at all for elementary and middle school at, you know, increasing the number of field trips and experiential things around this? Because we live in an area that is replete with museums and science centers and et cetera. And I don't see a lot of that at that level.
Right. To start, as far as the experiences with the careers, to answer your first question, that was one of the reasons why the Institute of Citizen Empowerment came into play, was to give the kids really more connection as far as law, other different careers in politics, government that they could experience. This past year, we actually took field trips to the Essex County Courthouse where the kids were exposed to actual real live court cases. They got to meet judges, they got to meet prosecutors. They also got to go behind the scenes and not just the judges and the prosecutors, but see how the clerks work and all the people that put that whole show together. And then this coming year, we're actually going to be expanding that. And the plan right now is to bring all of our 10th graders to Essex County Courthouse and expose them to that. And then moving down as far as other field trips that we could do, you know, obviously we know field trips present a variety of challenges.
Absolutely.
It's time out of the classroom. But it's certainly something in social studies that I think is the one area. I know when I was growing up and being able to go to places like Philadelphia and Museum of Natural History and being able to look at all that stuff, or those real world experiences that the kids get to see and experience every day.
Yeah.
Technology has helped us. We've been able to travel to some different museums via the technology. And it's a lot cheaper, well, it's not really cheaper because we've got to pay for the Chromebooks. But in terms of time, the teachers have really begun to gauge to take them on field trips through that experience. But I love the idea of being able to find ways, if we can find ways, to get our kids to experience a little bit more because we're just, where we are, there's just so much here, being so close to New York City and even just the history of New Jersey that we have alone.
All right, thank you, well done.
Mr. Charles?
No questions, just a comment. Thank you for the presentation, pretty thorough presentation.
Thank you.
I just have one more question.
Yeah.
If you were able to, are there any other courses that you would like to look to present to our students, particularly in the high school as it relates to AP courses? Or honors or general, whatever, but, you know?
The one course that I would like to consider, and we're still in flux right now in terms of social studies would be AP Economics. We did bring back Money Markets and Economy. We hadn't offered it, the numbers hadn't been that strong for a few years. We do have a section of it this year. I actually currently have the teacher running a survey with the kids, because right now it's only a half-year course, of how many of those kids, if it were in AP Econ, would be interested in taking it. I don't have that information just yet.
Okay.
But we are running it again for another half-year next year, and that would be the one area to try to expand. It's very difficult to look at a course like AP Euro because we already offer the AP World, you know, and it kind of overlaps a little bit. So we want to make sure that if we do go and add another AP, we want to make sure it's going to give the kids a different experience than something we already offer. And so AP Econ is the one we're kind of looking at, but we're still in the initial stages of that.
Good to know, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. At this point, if there's anybody from the public who would like to ask Mr. Olschowski a question or have a comment on the presentation tonight, I'll ask you to please come up to the microphone and identify yourself, and we'll go from there. Anybody? All right, don't all come at once, it's all right. All right, well, in that case, thank you very much for your presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're more than welcome to stay for the meeting unless you'd like to go do anything else.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your comments, thank you very much.
Have a good night, Steve, take care.
Okay, we're going to move on. Couple other things, couple quick things. Water testing, just wanted to inform everybody that we have not received any results on the water testing yet. We're expecting them any time. When we do, we'll obviously sit down with the company who did it, analyze, and decide what the next steps are so we can have that information available. The Hazel Principal Search, just wanted to update the community, the Hazel community that we began last week. We had our first round interview. Thank you very much to certain individuals on that committee. One of the parents are here tonight. And we'll be moving forward next week with the second round. There are three total rounds to the process. Parents and teachers in the building and administrators will be part of all of those rounds. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the board for some comments about the renaming of Pleasantale Elementary School to the Kelly Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Rutzke. May 19th, 2016, what a day for West Orange. It was picture perfect. We watched the weather leg maniacs making sure that it was going to be nice and pretty out, and I really could not have asked for a better day. I want to congratulate and thank the staff from Pleasantale. They really stepped up. It was just wonderful. Debbie Reese created a new song along with two other staff members. I'm sorry, I don't recall the name right now, but yep, let's give it up to Debbie Reese. Dr. Polara outdid herself. She was phenomenal, everything she did that day, leading up to it. And we had some really stellar parents who the day would not have gone anywhere as well as it did without them. And coincidentally, one parent had done events for the MBA, so she was very good at event planning. One was into doing events for MSU, and I believe that's the president of the PTA, Jen Tuncliff. It just was a phenomenal day. The kids were out there practicing. But I would like to thank, we had a number of community businesses that donated to make sure that this went off perfectly. And I need to thank every one of them. First and foremost, the Essex House. The Essex House donated lunch for the day. It was just very sweet. Kathy said, sure, you want lunch for 80? I've got lunch for 80. And she'd made lunch for 80. Mayfair Farms, our teachers parked there that day, so we were able to use the parking lot for the invited guests that day. And I want to thank Mayfair. Sodexo, our food company, they donated the breakfast, they donated a lot. Supreme Bakery, cookies, desserts, it was wonderful. Whole Foods, space.com donated the T-shirts that the children were wearing. The Sound System by Jerry from the Music Den, the sound was phenomenal that day. Metropolitan Plant donated the flowers that made everything so pretty that day. Collect Space also donated the shirts for the day. It was just a phenomenal day. To date, at this point, alumni from Pleasantale have already donated $25,000 to the new Kelly School for STEM work. And it was just, the smiles on the astronauts' faces, it just took your breath away. And Congressman Gabby Giffords, what a sweetheart. I had the privilege of speaking to her. She was just such a nice, gracious, poised woman. It was just a perfect day. And most importantly, or just as importantly, Assemblyman John McKeon. I knew he would be a good MC because I've seen John for the last 20 years, but boy, he hit it out of the park that day. He was just perfect. When the board was discussing, what were we looking for in an MC? And it was like, well, we need somebody fluid, somebody who could project, somebody who could turn on a dime, somebody who is just going to hold everyone's attention. And John did not disappoint at all. So thank you very much, Assemblyman McKeon, all of the dignitaries, all of the parents who were there. It was just, again, a fantastic day. And we're all very much looking forward to Kelly Elementary School and how they transform and what comes about. I see a couple of teachers back here from Pleasantale. Hello, Tracy, how are you? Great, good to be over there at Pleasantale or Kelly Elementary School. It's going to take us a while to say it, but it's a phenomenal, exciting time in our township. And later on in the day, the town council acknowledged the Kelly family, Mr. Kelly and his wife. She was the first policewoman in West Orange. Mr. Kelly was a police officer here for 25 years. The boys, the boys, I mean, the astronauts, they were in the first aid squad for a number of years. It was just, again, a great, picture-perfect day. And in fact, I just got an email from Principal Polara. We actually made the front page of the Boston Globe on Friday. And so it was just, you know, all over the place, and it just didn't get better for West Orange. So on behalf of my colleagues, we just want to say, go Kelly School, very, very cool. And we were all excited to be there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke.
Okay, just a couple of other things about the renaming. Cynthia Cummings is here, Perry Bashkov, they worked very, very hard on trying to put everything together as far as communication. Claudia Lacrecio is the woman you were speaking about, who works for the MBA. And she was the first to go to Dr. Polara and say, I'll be glad to help any way I can. And she was just instrumental in everything that went well. Really, a very big thank you to her. She was running around coordinating things, and she made it look very easy, and it clearly was not easy. And as I said at the renaming, Dr. Polara and the staff were just amazing, the work that they did. And a lot of things look very easy when it's time for the event, but the hours and hours and hours put into it prior to is why things come off so well. And really, huge thank yous to Dr. Polara and the entire staff of the Kelly School. With that, let's move on. Unfortunately, we have to switch gears from something really wonderful to something not so wonderful, the HIV report. So let me just hand out the HIV report to you.
Mr. Rutzke, just jumping back to Kelly, do you remember the name, Lauren's last name, the woman who did the program for us? She was a parent, and she put a lot of time into making that program happen. And I'm sorry, I don't recall her last name.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry. It's slipping my mind right now. If I remember before we go, I will certainly announce her name as well.
Thank you.
The program was beautifully done.
Absolutely.
Okay, we just have the, from the May 9th meeting, any questions?
No.
Nope. No questions? Okay. Thank you. And lastly, just a couple of things for the extracurricular and the athletic. As of today, the girls track, 5-1, contenders for the league title. Boys track, 5-1, also contenders for the league title. Baseball is 15-5, they are also contenders, they have two league games left. Softball, 7-15, they have two games left. Girls tennis, 6-10. Girls, excuse me, golf, 11-10. And lacrosse, 9-8. Lacrosse's season is over, everybody else still has two regular season games left. Just a couple of announcements. First, on June 1st and 2nd, for all the elementary schools except for St. Cloud, St. Cloud's dates are June 6th and 7th. We have the kindergarten orientation where the new kindergarten students come in. Please remember, those are half-days for all the elementary schools. Again, those dates are June 1st and 2nd for everybody except St. Cloud. St. Cloud is June 6th and 7th. They had a conflict that we had to work around. We know that Memorial Day is this weekend, or excuse me, Monday, so all the schools are closed this coming Monday, a week from today. Senior prom is this Friday, Birchwood Manor, and there's a lot of work that's going into it out of this building. There's going to be some very handsome and beautiful young ladies Friday night getting ready for that prom. Also on Friday, we have the 3rd grade instrument demo, meaning that the 3rd grade students get a chance to try out all the instruments. That's at 10 o'clock here in the high school, the students are brought up to. It's a very phenomenal day for the kids to come up and try things. This Wednesday, two days from now, we have the Scholarship Trustee Dinner honoring Marie De Mayo over at the Rock Spring Country Club. Tickets are still available if you would like to come and celebrate with Marie and everybody who will be there for Marie. As I mentioned the last meeting, we have lots of concerts that are going on. Please check the website of your child's school. 8th grade moving up, we're getting to that point. Can't believe I'm even having that conversation, but for Liberty in Roosevelt, it's Monday, June 20th. Check the times on the website, they alternate the times. They use the high school auditorium for those exercises. And then obviously, the high school graduation is at Cody Arena on June 22nd. That's all I have for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rutzke. Just have one question as it relates to kindergarten. The enrollment for the schools, do you have any numbers on that or any of the schools shut out at this point?
We have, I don't have numbers with me, but there are a couple of schools that are getting very close. As we discussed last year, we're trying to keep those numbers below 20 for kindergarten and first grade. And we have a couple of schools that are approaching that very quickly. So we're working and trying to find where those other parents and children will go to.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are there any questions from the public this evening on agenda items only? If you have any questions, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and Mr. Calavano will run the clock at three minutes, and we will answer in the entirety at the end of the Q and A. Anybody questions on the agenda this evening? Quiet night in West Orange, okay. We're going to move right along then. To the agenda, may I have a motion for personnel items 1 through 6?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
You okay? What? Okay, first, I would like to acknowledge our board attorney, Steve Christiano, will be retiring after 28 years. We appreciate and thank him very much for his service to the district. Any comments from the board on personnels 1 through 6? Ms. Mordecai?
No, thank you. I did want to add my congratulations to Mr. Christiano on his retirement.
Okay.
Thank him for his service.
Sure. Mr. Charles, anything?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Same, just congratulations to Steve for, and thank you for 28 years of service.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes, one, I'd like to congratulate Steve for his years of service. And in regard to the contract for the part-time bus drivers and monitors, I know and understand that everyone, this part-time, these are part-time workers, and everyone needs to have an increase in regard to cost of living and maintaining their cost of living. The standard that is used throughout the nation as well as the state is the rate of inflation. The rate of inflation in 2013 was 1.5%. The rate of inflation in 2014 is 1.6%. I feel that the rates that are in the proposed contract are excessive and should be in line with inflation and in line with raising... be in line with inflation and in line with raises and increases that citizens and people receive in private sector.
Okay. Thank you. Just one other comment. I see on page four, shockingly, at Edison, we're changing the knitting and crocheting club to digital photography and film club. I'm kind of surprised the kids didn't flock to that, but I have a feeling digital photography and film club will be that much more interesting. My grandmother was a knitter, so no haters there. I liked to knit, but wasn't very good at it. Anyway. Mr. Calavano.
Mr. Charles?
I'm going to abstain from Section B, school year number three. Yes on everything else.
Ms. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
No to Item A1, and yes to the balance.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion for curriculum and instruction? Hold on. 1 and 2.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make note on page 7. There will be a deletion of a workshop for the law forum on June 8.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Calavano?
Comments?
Oh, yeah. Got something to say?
Questions, real quick ones. And first of all, as I read through the curricula, and that's a lot of reading, they were so well-written, they were, I mean, the detail, the vision, and everything. I was blown away by the work that our supervisors were doing. Just had a couple of questions. One is Spanish, and I think I may know the answer to it, but, you know, Spanish 7 seemed, especially the first semester, was very elementary, and had material that is often covered for many districts in elementary school. And I know that right now that the high school Spanish, particularly the honors, often feels that kids are coming up there not fully prepared for that level. So it goes back to the level of preparation, starting at elementary school, as well as raising the bar a little bit in middle school. Is there any way that we can find, in this battle for time that includes science and social studies, we're increasing those, rightfully so, is there any way we can find more time to beef up the areas of Spanish in elementary school? And I know that, I don't know if there are contract constraints, as well as in the battle for time. That's question one. Science honors 8, under enrichment. I didn't know what the CPO, science skills were, and the PHET simulations. Also, I wondered, you know, we now provide, for the first time ever, thanks to Mr. Rutzke, enrichment for all. And, but enrichment, specific to science, has not been happening consistently. What are the plans, and I didn't see it in there, for some of the engineering enrichment, going to other grades, like Grade 5 did building projects, et cetera, but going to all the grades under enrichment? And then the last question is under math. Math had enrichment modification section, but it only had the modifications. It was missing enrichment. One, I think, may have just been an omission, because they do challenge questions right now that are part of enrichment, much higher level stuff, that are often extra credit, this part of enrichment. I do note that they're missing some of the more experiential, project-related stuff that ties the math back to physics, chemistry, et cetera, and I didn't know, you know, if there's anything you can mention about the real-world problem solving and how it's going to tie back to those. Those are my questions.
Okay. Let me take the Spanish one. We'll go in order of the question just. The challenge we have with Spanish, it's multi-leveled. We offer Spanish one time a week in elementary school, and based on the age, depending on how much time you get in elementary school, and then we go, and we don't have Spanish in the middle school every day until eighth grade. And it's very, very challenging to expect kids to become quality Spanish students when we're not offering it every day in the middle schools. However, when, just like we're doing with the science and social studies, where we've had it an AB, I just don't think that is good for kids learning science and social studies. I think we have to look at the world languages in seventh grade in particular, and determine, is there something we can do different in the middle schools? So, it's kind of systemic all the way down from seven. And it's, but again, there's a lot of constraints we have as well. If you're going to add additional time for something like Spanish, then you're taking away from another subject, and I don't think that there's too many teachers right now that would say they can really take away from something else to add something else, and it's hard. The second piece is the additional staff that would be needed to have more Spanish in elementary and the middle school would be tremendous, because we're talking, when you go into, you know, when you go up into eighth grade, being that it's offered every day, we'd have to look at all the students getting it every day, and then adding the staff to support that. So that would be a tremendous challenge as well, as well as fitting it in, and what will we take out specifically in the sixth grade and the seventh grade that would allow us to have it every day? And please understand, I'm certainly an advocate for having it in middle school every day. There's just some challenges we have to work on, and I've spoken to Ms. Cueros about this, and I don't think, again, that anybody would argue in the middle schools who teach world languages, specifically Spanish, that they don't believe it shouldn't be every day. I think they would all say it does have to be. And what really happens is the curriculum is not able to be covered because you're doing it every other day. So, you know, when you're looking at the standards, the state standards, they're setting that apart for 180 days, and we're really teaching it only 90 days, because it's an AB schedule. So they have to pick and choose and align the curriculum to meet those standards. So there's a lot of challenges, specifically in the elementary and sixth and seventh grade school. As far as the science honors and the simulations and the investigations, that's exactly what they are, trying to incorporate that in the enrichment, because that's really how science should be learned, through investigation and simulation. But the engineering projects at the elementary school, one of the things I believe is going to help us is where we're getting more science taught every day, and we're going to be able to incorporate some of the steam within the elementary and middle school. And that's one of the nice pieces that came out of the partnership with the renaming of the Kelly School, was the partnership we created with Montclair State University and NASA, and we're going to be having teachers going to Montclair State. We're going to be having professors and individuals from NASA who will be coming to all of the schools and working with our teachers, and how do we really incorporate steam into the elementary, middle school, and high school curriculum? And obviously, they're doing it well here, and they're trying to do it in the middle schools. But again, there's some reasons why they can't incorporate it completely. And lastly, under the Algebra I modifications, I haven't, I did not look at that specifically as far as the enrichment, but we'll certainly take a look at that in the next couple of days and see what needs to be done with that.
Thank you so much. And just one other note. I don't know, I know that our world language supervisor has made a move to bring in online language labs, which is fantastic, because that increases practice time and can even, in a way, augment instruction. Perhaps that's part of the solution, I don't know, for elementary and middle school as well. Because I know it's happening, going to happen at the high school. I don't know about elementary and middle school.
It's something that we're going to have to really look at, very much like we did years ago with the math program, with the language arts program currently. We're really going to have to do a needs assessment, a complete needs assessment, and really analyze, what are we doing well, and what can we do differently? We also just have to be aware there are some constraints that we may not be able to fix.
Understood.
We'll have to kind of work through that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rutzke.
Mr. Charles?
Mr. Rutzke, now that the Italian is put back in the middle school, have the children had an opportunity to repick or choose Italian as a language?
Well, they had chosen before the budget presentation, budget presentation was happening. So, there, it wasn't, when they had the opportunity to choose, there wasn't any concern that it was going to not be available to them.
Okay.
So the kids that chose, they haven't changed. They're still in Italian.
Okay. So no one got left out or blocked out of the class because of the board's decision on bringing it back, or?
I wouldn't want to sit here and say nobody got blocked out, because master scheduling is very challenging. I'd have to ask the principals who do that, but my understanding, when I was talking to them, the students received what they were trying to receive.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Schwartzbaum?
None.
Ms. Mordecai?
None. Thank you.
Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Ms. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes. May I have a motion for finance, special services 1 through 3, and business office as amended, 1 through 15?
I'll move those.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but I have to abstain on the settlement agreement.
Okay. And just so everyone knows, the amended business office agenda includes a settlement, approval of a settlement with SS as number 15. Before we go through this, I'd like to first make a comment, and I know I sound like a broken record, but under special services, number one, I found, find it just amazing that businesses, whether they're schools for special education students or anybody else, gets to back-bill someone up to three years after a contract is signed. And so tonight, unfortunately, we are being asked to approve a back-bill on a school with a contract made a number of years ago, but they determined they'd like some more money. That's kind of special. Mr. Calavano, can you please explain, stop laughing now, can you please explain number 7 and 8 under business office, please?
7 and 8 refers to the refunding. We're about to refund some of our outstanding debt. We're hoping that we'll achieve a savings of about $26,000 a year. And again, this money that we're going to be able to save cannot be used for the general fund, so it has to be set aside to reduce the tax levy, or the tax, no, the tax levy for the debt service each year.
Thank you. Mr. Rutzke, business office item number 13. Can you please give an explanation on this, or just background?
Sure. This is required at the county level. Anytime that we have trailers, or we use a room for a dual purpose, it's called, meaning that we take this room, we split it in half, and we use it for two different classrooms. We have to report that as a dual usage room. The trailers at two of the facilities, which would be Gregory and Washington, are 15 years old this year, and the trailers at Redwood are 14 years old.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board on finance items?
I have one.
Okay.
Mr. Calavano, could you please explain why we are opening, opening two new accounts at the agency?
Because technically, we should, these accounts should be separate from the general fund and our agency account, and they haven't been, so we're just creating accounts so we can separate the money. We have to record the interest separately from the other funds.
Thank you.
And these accounts will primarily be used for wires going in and out. We won't see any checks.
Any other questions from the board on finance items? Seeing none? Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Ms. Mordecai?
Yes, with the abstention on item 15.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes. May I have a motion for reports, items 1 and 2?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Ms. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes. Okay. Reports from the board president and/or board members. Ms. Mordecai, got anything for us tonight?
Yes. I'm happy to say I was a part of Relay for Life. It was a really great night, Friday night. From year to year, we see less and less people attending, and that's because Relay for Life has expanded across Essex County. I believe they now have a couple in Montclair, and, you know, also on the FDU campus and other places as well. So, the first time I went to Relay for Life was maybe 10, 15 years ago, and it was really, really crowded. And, but it was still a very good night. They raised quite a bit of money for cancer, for research, for rights to and from treatment. So it was very well-attended. Mrs. Lab was also there, and Superintendent Rutzke.
Okay.
Shout-out to all the kids who had teams, you know, they were...
A lot of teams.
A lot of teams. They spent the night overnight, and, you know, it's just amazing how many kids are camping out on the turf overnight, and there's no conflict, you know? Our kids are so awesome.
Well, the funny thing is, I was working at the registration table, along with Michelle Castellino, former board member, now councilwoman, and if there's two people in town, you want questioning those kids for their permission slips, it's me and Michelle. It's like, we weren't letting anybody through without those permission slips. But it was a very good night, and thank you very much, Lisa Renwick and company. I mean, they did a phenomenal job, and every year, they really go to town on it. It's a wonderful night. Mr. Charles, got anything for us tonight?
No reports tonight.
No reports for us tonight. Okay. Mr. Schwartzbaum, got anything to say?
I attended on May 17, the Autism Awareness Program. It was a real inspirational program. Kids really did a great job in the carnival, and shout-out to everyone for doing it. And I'd just like to add one thing in regard to the Kelly event. It was really phenomenal, and it really highlighted our town as an educational center. We got a lot of publicity on TV, radio, in the press, and really, it's really a real tribute to us in our town. And my own takeaway was from, it was that, from the children, and they also did a great job, was that if you aspire, you work hard, you persevere, you really can achieve any goal or dream you want. And I really think Mark and Scott really gave tremendous inspiration to the kids.
Absolutely. And the autism fair that you attended, that was at Mount Pleasant School, is that correct?
That was on Willsville, I believe. That was Mountain. Yes, it was Mountain. Mount Pleasant, yes.
Mount Pleasant, yes. Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because you didn't say the school, so I was wondering.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Was it somebody else's? But, yeah, I know Mr. Shiavo started that years ago, and I'm glad to see that it's continuing on. Unfortunately, we had a conflict that morning, so I'm really glad there was a board member in attendance. Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
Well, you know, we're all still on cloud nine from the Kelly Elementary School event. I thought that the biggest takeaway for the kids was when they talked about persistence, because one had difficulty as a pilot at one point. They both said they hadn't been the best of students, but at the end of the day, if you persist, if you work hard, you can achieve anything. And it was amazing, all the way around. Everyone's already said basically what I felt, so I'm not going to repeat it. I did attend as our delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association's Delegate Conference, and the debates were heated. At the end of the day, when they make decisions, they write into their policy book, and that policy then determines how they lobby at the state level, both legislature, as well as the New Jersey Department of Education, for policy changes. So there were some key decisions that they made. First and most important, and that was argued for almost an hour and a half, was that the NJSPA, it was almost unanimous, believes that the state should provide alternative methods of achieving state and federal requirements for graduation. Where did we hear this before? Not based only on standardized tests, but such as options such as the alternative high school assessment and portfolio assessments. Now, part of that came out of the rancor around the park, not so much just the existence of the park, but the fact that it had been, everyone felt it had been so poorly executed, they did not want to rely solely on the park for, as the criteria for graduation. So this was nearly unanimous. I don't know what change it will bring about as they lobby, but this was the decision. Second, there was agreement on, as we looked at the graduation age, there was a debate about, there's a proposal to increase the graduation age above, the mandatory graduation age above 16 years old. And there's overwhelming data to support that 17, or when it's 17 or 18 years old, you significantly increase your four-year college attendance rates, and the overall outcomes in terms of conversion to college conversion... and the overall outcomes in terms of conversion to college, conversion to work, are much, much higher. At the, on the converse side, there was concern that if it was made mandatory, that this could impose cost on districts, that districts may not be prepared to take, to assume. So rather than compulsory attendance, the delegates voted to support the concept that local boards should be given the option to require compulsory school attendance beyond the current state age of sixteen. So districts can do it on district-by-district basis. They also voted to exclude state mandated programs from the two percent cap, budget cap. That won't happen, but they voted for it. Voted to allow acceptance of both tuition students, of tuition students while still participating in the inter-district public school choice programs, and that's good for everybody. It's certainly good for us if we were to proceed along those lines. It allows more competitive environment and essentially fewer limitations on revenue generation opportunities for school systems. And they also supported some other areas that probably won't come to fruition that had to do with the state absorbing more costs when it came to health benefit plans as well as unfunded pensions, et cetera. You know, once again, they can vote to add it to policy where it's going to actually end up in, in reality is a different story. Also had to, got to attend as part of a state requirement, my, as a board member, governance three student achievement training. Now, when we first started as board members, we're all given some student achievement training, and it's touched upon again in other trainings throughout the years, and the, and NJSPA continues to upgrade it. And this is really very intensive. It was a wonderful time. One thing that they talked about is that the New Jersey Common Core State Standards changing its name to the New Jersey Learning Standards. And there's going to be greater emphasis placed on, while they already have a great emphasis placed on writing for all subjects, there'll be greater emphasis placed on the humanities alongside of STEM, and this is part of the whole evolution from STEM to STEAM as well. They talked again, you know, about our role in policy, advocacy for constituents, reminding us that we represent the public's interest, and, and being data-driven, particularly in identifying performance areas and achievement gaps, et cetera. But it was overall a very, very good session, a lot of great questions, and it kind of reinforced a lot of things we're already doing in terms of being very data-driven. One of the things they did recommend, though, that was brand new to me, was that there be a climate survey. They said up to two times per year, and this was above and beyond the strategic planning research process. So, you know, something certainly to look at. And the climate survey involved students in the survey, as well as parents and teachers. That was it. It was a, it was all around, along with the Essex County School Board Awards, and if you wanted to talk about that, it was a School Board Association week for me. But it was very enlightening all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you. The interesting thing about being a school board member in New Jersey is that we are the only elected official who is required to have mandated training. So, you know, as Mr. Robertson mentioned, he's in his first term, third year, he's required to do governance three. There's a series of required mandated trainings that we all must attend to, and the culmination of that is to look to have your boards certified, meaning everybody has attended what needs to be done and what needs to be attended to. So I am very proud to say that the West Orange Board of Education was recertified this year as a board in good standing, and that ceremony took place, or acknowledgement took place a couple of weeks ago at the Essex County School Board Association. It really is a feat to be recertified because it proves the commitment of the individual board members and the board at large to actually go above and beyond the minimum requirements. So Ms. Mordecai is the vice president of this organization, so it was really nice to have the hometown team there. And I really would like to give a big thank you to Charlene Peterson. Charlene Peterson is our school, I like to call her our school board babysitter. She's from-
Our principal.
She's our principal.
She's our guy.
She's a former school board member, and she now works for New Jersey School Board Association, and her territory is enormous. It's Essex County, Hudson County, and part of Morris County. So if you can imagine all the drama that goes on with all of those counties, let alone the individual districts, she really is all over the place. So I do want to thank her for her guidance and support for the West Orange Board of Education. Speaking of school board, New Jersey School Board Association meetings, I represent or serve on the New Jersey School Board Association for Special Education Committee. We had a committee meeting on May fourteenth, and, you know, sometimes Trenton has an epiphany, and they pass legislation, and there's no money attached to it, and poof, away it goes. There was legislation passed for something called a special education ombudsman, which was supposed to expedite, you know, conflicts between parents and the district and so on. But guess what? It's not funded. So how is it going to be an office of the ombudsman if there's no funding? Gee, I don't know. Hold your breath. I don't think it's going to be happening, and that was the message we really got. But on a happier note, on May sixteenth, Mr. Rutzke and I attended the Special Ed Awards. I'm a judge. I represent the School Board Association, and we were thrilled that one of our teachers, and I did abstain from the vote, Deb Cohen was acknowledged as one of ten recipients across the state for her innovative program in technology. And actually, I see Sue Frevel back here. I didn't know she was there that day, because she was sitting behind me. But her son was also awarded a, an award, so to speak, for art, I believe. Art, was that right, Sue? Art? So it was really nice just to see another individual resident recognized that day. And again, it was a lovely ceremony. It happens once a year. So congratulations to Ms. Frevel's son and to Deb Cohen. You make West Orange proud. At this point, I'd like to open up the discussion for petitions and questions from the public on any matter. If you have any questions, please come forward, state your name and address. Mr. Calavano will run the clock, and the board will answer in its entirety at the end of the Q and A. Anybody got anything to? Okay, we have a couple of customers. Lady in the green popped up first, and then the lady right behind, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathleen D. Franceschi, and I live at forty-one Orange Heights Avenue. Good evening. I'm here to make an appeal for the honors program and how the children's scores are determined. While I agree that the rollout this year was more transparent, I disagree with the amount of weight that goes to the students' scores based on their grades. I know others feel the same way. I'll give you my son as an example. Last year, when he was in sixth grade, he made it into two honors classes, math and science. We made an appeal for language arts and social studies for which he was admitted. Although first quarter he did not make honor roll with a one B and one C, the rest all As, he had earned honor roll this past two quarters with only one B in each quarter. Again, this is including all four honors classes. A learning curve is expected when the bar is raised. I would say that my son's was over very quickly. We have these on our fridge at home. He currently has straight As this quarter, setting his sights on high honor roll. He's proud of his achievements this year, as he should be. He's worried about being bored next year. I feel so strongly about this for my son and other families who have the same concerns. I'm missing my son's concert tonight at Roosevelt. He plays in orchestra, chamber orchestra, and jazz band. Mr. Rutzke, as you said in Essex News Daily, I'm not frustrated by the fact that he was not accepted into the honors program, because it is difficult to see my child not get something he wants. I believe he's earned it. You also said that just because a child didn't get in this year does not mean they aren't intelligent. It just means the time may not be right for it yet. I believe his successful performance this year proves that the time is indeed right for him to step up to the challenge next year. When evaluating possible changes for next year, I would ask the board to consider equal weighting for the criteria or a certain cutoff grade to maintain honor status, as Rachel Gordon suggested in the Essex News Daily. If we do not require yearly reevaluations for honor students, it will free up plenty of time for other testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hello, my name is Vicki Russo. I live at forty-seven Fairmont Terrace. I'm a resident. And I saw an article about how our school district was ranked in regards to alcohol and drug incidents in our school district. And we were in the top twenty of a lot of incidents. I guess I need an explanation of what consists of an incident with alcohol and drugs in our school district, and what are we going to do to lower the amount of incidences that we're having? Because I'm very proud of our school district. I think our high school is phenomenal. And I'm worried that if we, if our school district falls in this ranking, that, you know, we are having these issues, that it's going to hurt our school district and eventually our property values. So that's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hello, Mr. Carter?
Tim Carter, six Oxford Terrace. In connection with Mr. Schwartzbaum's comment about the rate of inflation, I wondered, could we, could you tell the public, could someone tell us, what was the increase then that was passed in this item A1 with respect to part-time bus drivers and monitors? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Sue?
Sue Frevel, ten Ridgewell Avenue. I have a couple of questions relating, of course, spec ed. First of all, once upon a time, I know you told a story about being in an IEP meeting, Laura, with a parent, and the IEP team was saying, "We don't have an inclusion class for your grade." And you said, "Well, if the IEP says, then you need to build it, and if you build it, they will come." Well, there are parents right now who are trying very hard to get third-grade inclusion at Gregory School, and they're getting the runaround. They're being told, "We don't offer it." Now, in another school, within the last year, another parent has literally gotten a runaround where the IEP team said, "We can't offer that to you because it doesn't exist in your child's grade next year in the school. You have to go talk to Connie." So the parent went to talk to Connie, and Connie said, "I will provide an inclusion classroom if it's in the IEP. Go talk to the IEP team." Goes back to the IEP team, three times, going around a circle like this. Obviously, you can see that she did not get inclusion. So now we have parents trying to get inclusion, and the teams are either recommending either staying in LLD, going to general ed with no inclusion, anything but that inclusion class. There is a need for it. Please build it. On another topic, ESY. I was told today that ESY is only offered to those students in self-contained classes. And when I argued that there are kids in inclusion, resource, other in-district programs who are classified in danger of regression, they are entitled to ESY. And I was told the only option in district that is offered is to go into either the LLD or autistic ESY classes, which obviously is not appropriate. And there's a memo from the DOE talking about ESY and about how districts are supposed to look at community programs, tutoring, think outside the box, literally think outside the box. And yet, right now, we're telling our parents that the only ESY programs that we offer in district are LLD or autistic. Now, for out-of-district kids, they usually get the ESY at their out-of-district school, but if the parents ask for something like, "My child really needs social skills maintenance, not academic." Can they go to, say, Stepping Forward? They get that, because it costs less than their out-of-district ESY. If you're in district, and you don't cost the district very much, trying to get any sort of ESY other than LLD or primary or autistic is off the table. So do we really have nothing else in district to offer for ESY for those students who are not in self-contained? Thank you.
Thank you.
It was at St. Cloud, but it was a supervising.
Hi, this is Ron, five Forest Valley Road. I'm going to talk also in regards of the honor roll. My son going from Hazel to middle school. I'm not going to pretty much repeat everything that she said besides she did it a lot more beautifully. I will be able to do it, so. But it's pretty much what she indicated. We want to know what is the procedure. My son is being fourth and fifth grade, every single marking period, A and B. To be honest, I just wanted math. The reality is, and people who knows me knows that, I don't believe in your honor program. But math, he deserved it. He's good at it. He's forte. I don't see why it shouldn't be happening. And I want to know what is the procedure, because it was indicating to him that it was just choose randaling. If it was just randaling, why he have to take fortes in order to see if he qualify? I think we are just, as always, giving them, "This is the big meal, but you may not even get the chance to get the lollipop, which will be the dessert." And it seems like that's been the line, the West Orange, my district, is taking lately. On the other hand, in a more positive way, way to present it, past this fourth, I mean, on the second of June, it will be giving fourth award to four very deserving graduating school, students from the senior class, which is amazing, because from the ten application that we receive, all of them already have receiving letter setting them in an university. We are going to be able only to provide a scholarship for four. Thank you.
Any other questions from the public this-
By the way, wear red.
Any other questions from the public this evening? Seeing none. Mr. Rutzke?
Okay, Steve Francesca, that's certainly, when you're talking about the equal weighting, that was a long conversation. Where's Miss Steve Francesca? It was a long conversation about the weighting and across the, you know, the placement test and the grades and things of that nature. That's certainly something that can come back to the, to the committee next year when we sit down and talk about different things. I'm assuming you've sat and talked with the principal and done things, so I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting about some other specific things. Ms. Russo, I literally got word of this, this ranking. I think it was about six o'clock tonight. I have not seen it. I heard it's from the tap, and what I heard is-
Patch.
Uh, Patch, excuse me. And that I heard that it's self-reporting. Anything that's self-reporting is obviously not a valid description, but I don't know enough about it, so I'll look into it and we'll see what it is. The, you know, I heard a couple of districts that had, you know, three, four, five kids, where, you know, West Orange had other kids. I don't know enough about it to comment on it, but if it is actually self-reporting, then it's not something I would take serious, because we know that people, some districts are very honest, and some districts are not. And when it comes to self-reporting, you don't have to say that you were part of a program or you got into a program, or you were suspended for drug and alcohol use, whatever it is. You don't have to do that. So the numbers really are skewed when it comes to that, but I'll look into it and see what it is. Mr. Carter, the, the increase for the part-time bus drivers and monitors was fifty cents an hour, which equates to 2.4% increase. Miss Frevel, I will certainly look into what you're saying. If you, where's Miss Frevel? If you'd like to just send me an email and just indicate what it is, I'll make sure we get those answers for you. There's a couple of things that you said were a little shocking to me as well, so I just want to find out exactly what it is. But please, send me an email, and I'll get back to you on that. And Mr. Arndt, I wasn't quite sure that, that piece, the choosing randomly about the four, I'm not quite sure what you meant by that. But, but again, the, the idea here is, I would certainly talk to the principal, and I can speak to you afterwards as well.
Any other comments from the board?
Very briefly, a question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Rutzke, two things. First, on the Patch's totally unqualified, and I feel unprofessional, attempt at journalism. If we look at the actual number of cases that we're aware of across our district, just from the ones I know, we're looking at less than one percent district-wide of any issues, under three percent, probably even under two percent at the high school, of anything that actually comes, you know, that, that ends up being a case for the board or a case for the police. Very, very, very small percentage for a public school district. And I just think that people need to, need to know that, when it's based on actual data. Two is, as we're looking at honors, and I understand, it's great, you know, it was wonderful to hear that you're, as you're listening to all the feedback, you're really open to, hey, let's, you know, look at this again next year. At each step of the way, you and the committees and us, you know, really improved things over last year, took it to another level, and you're still looking always at continuous improvement. Could one of the considerations be, and I'm going to base this on a quote from you, for the kids who are already in honors, if they have a B not having the test? And I say that because, once you said, "You know what? C's average." I'd rather a kid get a B in honors than an easy A in a regular course. So if a kid, and you've always said the goal is to challenge children at their highest level without- to challenge children at their highest level without frustrating them. I know that, you know, if, if a kid's getting a B in an honors course, that's still pretty good work. And, you know, I would, and I've heard, heard from a couple of kids who didn't make it in. One kid came to me, he's actually my barber's son. I said, "How are you doing?" He says, "Ah, math again, an easy A. I didn't make it into honors for some reason, so I'm just enjoying it. It's easy." You know, so if we could really reexamine that, and for kids who are already in, and as well as reexamining the weighting, and I really appreciate that.
Sure. The, the issue is, that discussion was brought up and discussed quite often about what really should be that cutoff. And again, I've said it, and I believed it, and I lived it. A student who's getting a B in honors, I, I think that's a very, very solid grade. The committee feels differently about having them be exempt from things with a B in honors, and I don't disagree with the committee on that as well. So, we're talking about two different pieces. I think a B is a very solid grade in any honors course. I think a B is a solid class in, or a solid grade in any, any course. But again, the, with the, with the exemption of the criteria, the majority of the committee felt, an A is the way to go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Got something. Yeah, that's my, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Make a motion for that.
Yes. Our next board meeting will be held on June first at Central Office at six thirty. It'll be a closed meeting?
No, it's, it's a public, it's a special meeting, just to approve the health benefit rates.
Okay. And then our following meeting will be June thirteenth, eight p.m. at West Orange High School. Okay. I'm tired, I'm sorry. Okay, now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.